All right, I'd like to welcome you all out to the Western Weaver Planning Commission meeting. Today is August 8th. It is just after 5 o'clock. Thank you all for coming. Looks like we'll go ahead and all of our commissioners are present tonight except for Commissioner Nivell. We'll go ahead and excuse him from the meeting. If you all wouldn't mind standing and stating a pledge with me? Thank you for that. We're going to go ahead and jump right into our administrative items. First item will be item 2.1 LVA 042723. Consideration and action on a request for recommendation of final approval of Anselmi Acres Phase 1. Director Grover?
As administrative item, you do not need to take public comment. Mr. Burton will be presenting this item and you can ask comments from the applicant as well.
Thank you. Steve, you're up.
Yes, good evening, planning commissioners. You've got a request for a recommendation for final approval of Anselmi Acres Phase 1. Thirty-three lots located in the RE15 zone. I've shared it on my screen. I can't see it. Maybe, can you guys see it on your screens? Oh, okay. You're, I think you're pretty familiar with the, with the project. It is around 1400 South, pretty close to 4300 West. It is 15 acres. And last month in July, there was a request for you to grant preliminary approval of the project, and that was done on July 11th. And now it is a request in the next, the next step before going to the county commissioners and providing a financial guarantee for all the improvements is to get a recommendation for final approval from the planning commission. Just to go over the, there were five conditions of approval, of preliminary approval that I can go over with you real quick. First one was that a donation to the Parks District as listed in the development agreement will be paid by the developer before the Phase 1 subdivision plat records. As staff, we're still expecting that to happen. And we will make sure that that does happen. Number two, the building setback along 1400 South shall be shown on the final plat. That's not done yet. Looking at the final plat, it's a comment that we have to the developer to make sure that they address that with another version of their final plat. Comment number three, the final plat will reflect the development standards that were approved as part of the development agreement. When building permits are submitted, we like the owner and builder, as well as us, to be able to refer to those building setbacks pretty easily, especially because the setbacks were, were slightly different than the RE15 zoning setbacks. They're, they're really were meant to be closer to the R115 zoning setbacks, but you may remember that this development was approved before R115 was finalized. Four, Phase 2 will not receive a recommendation for final approval until the emergency egress is provided. And tonight, we don't have Phase 2 before you, but that may come back at a later date when that access is provided. The last condition is that the applicant will provide a cost estimate for improvements to 1400 South complying with the subdivision ordinance for substandard streets. And we've met with, at least I have met with the county engineer and reviewed a cost estimate from the developer to upgrade 1400 South all the way over to 4300 West. And there is a proposed improvement to the asphalt width that the county engineers is comfortable with. And that is what is, will be expected to be provided for in some kind of financial guarantee. The subdivision code talks about before coming back for a final recommendation from the planning commission that the, the developer has to provide a capacity assessment letter for water, for culinary and secondary water. Now, for culinary and secondary water, we've got Taylor West Weber for culinary, and we've got Hooper Irrigation for secondary. Taylor West Weber has provided, as of today, has provided a final approval letter instead of a capacity assessment letter. They do reference capacity in their final approval letter, but they typically don't issue a, an actual capacity assessment letter. So we're taking their final approval letter to be the capacity assessment letter. Hooper Irrigation, this is something that was brought up in the pre-meeting with you, and I don't feel I adequately addressed it. So Hooper Irrigation has provided a preliminary will serve. They have not yet provided a capacity assessment letter. One, because they typically don't issue those. They issue the final approval letter. And the final approval letter is typically something that's required before going to the county commissioners. Now, in, in speaking with the developer before this, it was talked about just putting Hooper Irrigation as a signature on the plat or providing a final approval letter before the subdivision records. And either of those are viable options, and we would expect that just as part of our normal subdivision review to be done before taking it to the county commissioners. You'll notice in the staff report, the staff recommendation is, is, is approval that you, that you forward a positive recommendation to county commission based on the proposal meeting the land use code with conditions. And I listed those conditions in the staff report as the staff recommendation and as well as some findings in there. There, let's see, there aren't really any conditions on there that we haven't talked about that you're not aware of. So happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Commissioners, any questions?
How come they can't answer that? Uh, sorry, who, uh, who? They, my understanding is they don't provide a capacity assessment letter. Our ordinance specifically says a capacity assessment letter should address all these things. And we can, we can't force this provider to give us a capacity assessment letter. What we can do is say, well, by you signing the plat, that means that you're comfortable with this plat recording. And so that's likely what it will come to, is just a signature block on the plat.
That's up to the developer to provide it to the county. It's not necessarily county's legwork to go get it. The developer should be providing it. Yeah. No, I agree.
My experience with Hooper, I haven't seen too many subdivisions get stalled because of their refusal to do any of that, but. Sure.
So I've got a question on the road improvement for 1400 South. In the development agreement, that's going to be spelled out. Should it also be part of the recommendation?
You.
Yes, it should be. I think it should be the fifth condition.
That's, that's what I'm thinking.
You're welcome to make it a condition, but you're right. It will be sp- it will be spelled out in a subdivision improvement agreement.
Oh yeah, if we put the water on there.
And that was all I had.
Anything else, commissioners?
So you said you'd recommend, I heard two things and I want to make sure I've got them correct. A final approval letter from Hooper Irrigation before they come before the county commission? Or sign the plat, or both? What, what do you think?
I don't actually recommend adding that as a condition just because that is something in our office that is done anyway. And it's part of, you know, based on all review agency conditions. But, but you're welcome to add that as a condition if you'd like. But what we're, what we will expect is a final approval letter from Hooper Irrigation or their signature on the, on the plat before it records.
So that, that's included in your all agencies caveat that we put in most of these recommendations?
Um, I, I guess, reading my recommendation, I don't actually say all review agency requirements. It's, um, so, so it may be a good idea to add that.
So you're saying either the final letter or signing the plat, either one would be acceptable?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're the applicant. If you've got anything you want to address us, yeah, feel free. Just state your name for the record for us, please.
Brad Brown, Stewart Land Company. I, I just wanted to be clear that the letter or the plat would not happen before going to county commission.
The letter has to happen before going to county commission, based on county ordinance, right, Steve?
That's the way that the ordinance is written. Now, the county commission could decide, they could, they're, they're more than welcome to make conditions of approval and pass that to, you know, maybe they want to give approval in a regular meeting, but they don't sign the plat until he provides that.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah, beginning, or if we get the signature on the plat, we can't take a plat till it's been approved by county commissioners. And, and the reason they, they do this, and this might be, you know, for a later discussion, is they say, they, if they give an approval letter, then it's out of their hands. That's why they want to be on the plat, so they have signature, so they get their fees paid. Otherwise, they want you to pay, you know, their, their full fees before things are approved, which is a, a big risk on the developers. So. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So maybe having the, the letter and signing the plat, like.
Like what Taylor West Weber does, you can see, there's kind of a draft of it in the next item. But like one of their, it says they have, you know, they've given them final approval, but it says like the water rights fees have to be paid prior to the recording of it, as well as they have to have a signature block on the plat. So that they, they won't sign the plat unless them fees have been paid. So it can't record. So.
So where the water company is not putting that in there, right?
I don't know, does, does Hooper normally sign the plat?
No.
I don't think Hooper normally, Hooper Irrigation normally does it. But you're kind of covered there because Taylor West Weber is the drinking water. Until Hooper's satisfied, Taylor West Weber won't take care of it because it's a condition of theirs in here as well, that it has to be handled prior to getting drinking water.
So Taylor West Weber essentially, once they sign the plat, that's finding water.
Yep, yeah, so I, I think we're covered. Um, but I think, yeah, just mention that it needs to be done when we're, you know, the final approval letter or before recording. I, I think it's the easiest way, don't you, Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, not before going to commission.
Yeah. Because if commission doesn't approve it and the subdivision dies and the developers paid out a bunch of money and they probably aren't going to get it back. But as long as commissioners approve it, then it's basically done other than recording the plat. And then, so they could pay their fees and then. Yep.
That's why.
Yep.
Brandon, very grateful that you understand that because that, what that is, is a, is a pain point. We don't want to pay $250,000 hoping that we get it.
Yeah, I don't mind. Yeah, I'm with you. You gotta get that final approval. But the, the holdup of it is, is that recording that, you know? And that's where getting these guys to sign it. Even though when we redid the water ordinances, it was, still got left out. If you go, they have to put it in approval letters because that's a whole nother story. Sorry. Now I'm venting, but, but that's the way to address it. Any other questions or concerns on this one? I just think the county, just put it as county engineer's recommendations.
Oh yeah, the subdivision improvement agreement.
Perfect. Okay, nothing else. I'll entertain a motion on this item. Chair, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve Anselmi Acres, item number LVA 042723, per staff recommendations listed in our packet on page three. Items one through four of the recommendation. And then the addition of item five, three feet of asphalt on each side of 1400 South from the east boundary of this subdivision to 4300 West per the subdivision improvement agreement. And also per the Weber County engineer. And an additional item, item number six, a letter from Hooper, a, a final approval letter from Hooper Irrigation that offers a plat signature before recording. That'll be all of those items. And then in addition, the three items, the three findings, findings as listed on page three of today's staff report as well. So hopefully that's clear. Just a clarification. Okay. Just, do you want the letter or do you want the letter and the signature? Both. I want them both. Okay. I think that makes things really clear. But that'll entertain a second. Uh, motion, a second, any discussion?
Just had a question. Is it going to be, is there a problem with having Hooper Irrigation sign it? If they don't generally sign it?
The, the, just the problem I see with it, and, and I, I, I think as long as the water district signs it, the water district's not going to move it forward. You know, Taylor West Weber's not going to sign off if Hooper doesn't agree to it. So I, I think having Hooper come in, it just adds a, adds an extra step or trying to find a board member or someone to come in and actually sign that plat before it comes in. So I don't agree with that signature on there, but I, I think the water district covers it. The, the culinary district.
Culinary.
So.
And, um, is there, is there a particular reason you want both the letter and the signature?
I, I think it's important to have them both. It makes it clear. And that way we know for sure that the applicant is talking with Hooper Irrigation as well. And that doesn't leave it open for the culinary district to have to do all of the legwork.
But doesn't the culinary district do it anyways because it's part of their agreement?
Yes, yeah, they have to to a degree. But that, that makes, that, to me, that makes it so that, that the, uh, that there is clear conversation happening with the secondary provider and with the applicant.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? I'll call for a vote. Commissioner Clontz?
Aye.
Commissioner McCormick?
Aye.
Commissioner Andreaotti?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferro?
Aye.
Commissioner Wickern?
Aye.
Chair votes no on this one and not has anything to do with subdivision. I just don't agree with the requirement for the Hooper Irrigation to sign the plat. Okay, that passes. Next item is going to be item 2.2 LVS 061323. Request for preliminary approval of Stagecoach subdivision, 116 lot subdivision in the R15 zone at approximately 1800 South, 3800 West. Uh, this propose, proposal includes road dedication and public pathways throughout the development. Director Grover?
Again, this is administrative item. Public comment is not required on this. Miss Ada Lot's going to be presenting this, and the applicant's here to answer any questions.
Okay.
Hey, good evening, commissioners. As was stated, this is a proposal for 116 lot connectivity incentivized subdivision in the R115 zone. You are going to see on their proposed preliminary plat lot areas that range from 6,000 to 20,000 square feet. There are pathways proposed throughout this. Street trees will be, are part of the development agreement that was previously approved back in May, um, as well as a voluntary donation to the Parks District. This is a side by side. Okay, we've got what was approved with the development agreement on the left and what's currently being proposed per staff recommendations from both, um, planning and engineering on the right-hand side. And I just wanted to point out a few of the changes that staff is requesting. Um, in the previous, uh, concept layout, I guess, uh, you would see what staff had initially asked for was an 80-foot right of way here. Um, we had asked for a road stub to the north. We had asked for pathways throughout. You can see these, and these road widths vary from typically from 66 feet. So you've got 66 feet here and here, 60 feet here and here, and I think 60 feet on Street B as well. What is currently being proposed that staff is recommending preliminary approval for is actually a 66-foot wide right of way for Street A. And the reasoning for that is when we look further to the south, there's really not a way for this road to continue very much further, to be honest, because of existing development. And so, um, 66 feet makes more sense, frankly. Um, we have also asked the developer to eliminate this road stub here and put a pathway instead. It seemed a bit redundant to have that stub there. Um, and so these, let me just kind of point out a few features that are being proposed. We've got 15-foot pathways here. One thing that isn't shown yet that we will require on their proposed final plat is continuation of this pathway here um, on the south side even just to here so that it can meet up with the pathway along 1800 South. There is a proposed 10-foot pathway on 1800 South. And so I believe that currently they're proposing this pathway over here on Street C, but planning would prefer to see it just here, even if it's just a portion of that pathway along Street D and then down to 1800 South. Uh, another change that, um, is going to be a little bit different that staff will ask for, and we would actually ask that you add this as a, as a recommendation of preliminary approval. In our ordinance, along right of ways that are typically 66 feet or greater, uh, you'll often see a, a 10-foot pathway within that cross-section, a 10-foot pathway on one side and a four-foot sidewalk on the other. Uh, the applicant is proposing on the 60-foot right of ways a four-foot sidewalk on both sides, which our ordinance calls for a five-foot sidewalk. And so we would ask that that be amended to require a five-foot sidewalk in those street cross-sections that do not call for a pathway on one side. Hope that was clear. Um, just an overview, you guys saw this with the rezone, and I know that we've probably got a more comprehensive map at the moment, but this is how it fits in with, um, with surrounding development. We're looking at eventually, um, a right of way to the north, and that's exactly where these roads would tie in to provide further connectivity. You've got Anselmi Acres over here. What they're proposing ties in with the general plan by providing connectivity to adjacent neighborhoods, both pedestrian and vehicular. These are some of the standards that are outlined in the R115 zone. You've got minimum, um, lot widths, setbacks, street cross-sections. This is in here specifically addressing the four-foot sidewalks that are currently proposed and the need for those to be five-foot sidewalks on either side. These are some of the boxes that we like to see checked for preliminary approval. They're proposing a development that complies with the 2022 Western Weber general plan. They've submitted will serve, uh, even a final approval letter from Taylor West Weber. Um, and these are the conditions of approval. What I would recommend for consistency's sake, based on the previous development, is to either strike the second condition of approval, and we can address it when we come back for a recommendation of final, or to amend this, to have Taylor West Weber sign the final plat, which they've outlined in their final approval letter. Um, so I'll leave that up to the planning commission. We can either address this for a final approval, but either way, likely this should be something that comes up prior to going, or prior to recording the final plat. And then we would recommend adding this third condition of approval, five-foot sidewalks on either side for those right of ways that don't propose a pathway on one side. Now, the developer is here and he may be able to speak to this donation of the Parks District. That, that donation, my understanding is the agreement between the developer and the Parks District has changed just a little bit. They've come to another agreement, or they may be working through that. We will be looking for more solidified details and even an agreement to be executed prior to recording the final plat. And that'll come up later on when they come back for a recommendation of final approval.
Perfect.
Do you have any questions for me at this time?
To clarify, which, um, final approval letter do you have, Taylor or Hooper?
From Taylor. Hooper Irrigation has provided a preliminary, um, approval letter.
I do have one question on that preliminary letter. Night, Pat, this is probably more for you. I don't know if it was just a clerical error, clerical issue with Hooper, but they're claiming for this one on their letter, it's only 27 lots, not 116. That's just a big number. Big difference, lot of difference in water.
Yeah, good evening, Pat Burns, uh, 1407 North Mountain Road. Um, yeah, that's, I didn't even catch that. I, yeah, that's a big clerical issue. But yeah, they, uh, we've addressed it. We've actually been working. We're going to the meeting Monday night to finalize how to do these. So this is a new development for Hooper to have to supply the secondary water the way we're doing it. So yeah, it'll be a whole new letter that you guys will see coming. But yeah, that's a big cler- I don't know how we all missed that, but, uh, um, yeah, they know it's 116 lots.
That might have been based on when it was still one acre lots several years ago.
Must have been before we had it approved at 56 lots, so I'm not sure where they came at 27 of that.
A lot of times, these are boilerplates and they just change one thing here or there, and they might have looked over that, but yeah, let's just look at that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wait, I, here's where, never mind, I'm completely wrong. Phase one of this development, phase one is only 27 lots, correct?
Uh, that's correct, yes.
It's here, my bad.
That's actually how I missed that.
Well, I'm just looking at, me too. I just see 27, and I'm like, wait a minute, 116, 27? Uh, it goes back to that thing, we gotta read, kind of like that email. Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for the developer, for staff? So is, or is this just for phase one then?
Will it be preliminary for the entire subdivision?
Okay. Then final will be for phases, correct?
Yeah, we'll see what the.
Whether you bring two or three in, but.
Yeah.
Okay. If no questions or comments, commissioners, I will call for a motion.
So on this motion, on the staff recommendations, I mean, for the item number one, is that just, do we want to reword that to be sort of a, you know, whatever the agreement becomes instead of $2,000 per?
I think it's just a, an approval letter or something from the Parks District that states that they've come to an agreement. I don't, I mean, I don't think we care what that agreement is.
No.
We, we've left that up to them to, to negotiate and, and come to the agreement. So I think, I mean, I, I, yeah, I think, you know, whatever the, the, it's locked in the development agreement, correct, from the rezone?
Correct.
Um, that something's got to be done with the satisfaction of the Parks District, so. And then I think we can address the, the next portion when they come for final about them, making sure that whatever that agreement, financial or whatever it is, is made prior to recording it so that that's addressed at that time. They're making notes for their motion, hopefully. Yes, sir. I fell asleep for. Sorry, that's what, yeah, yeah, waiting for a motion on this one. June, what'd you put in our water?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for approval of item 2.2 on today's agenda, LVS 061323, uh, for preliminary approval of Stagecoach subdivision. 116 lots is listed on today's agenda. And also per page four of our staff recommendations, uh, item one will be, um, changed to, an agreement will be made to the Western Weber County Parks District before the subdivision plat records. Uh, and then we'll get a final of that, we'll, we'll have that agreement. Plat records, uh, and then we'll get a final of that, we'll, we'll have that agreement before final approval. On the pla- of the planning commission. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay, and then uh, item number two will be as written. Um, will I add item number three on the sixty foot roads for and Tammy, correct me if I'm wrong here, but add a five foot sidewalk on each side of the sixty foot roads as, has been proposed in today's. Uh, change or, or new map of that uh, subdivision, okay? And then the findings will be as they are. Listed.
Okay, okay, I got a motion. We got a second. Second, I'm motion and a second, any discussion?
There. You talked about the sixty foot ri- right away, five foot streets, but did we talk about the continuation of the pathway from street D to street C?
We didn't. Okay, so then Tammy, can you go back on your slide to that page? Okay, so then, per staff recommendation, also, so this would be item number four. Um, a continuation of the path on to street D. And following that street to the termination with eighteen hundred south. Near lot one oh one, yeah. Okay, does. We got that, okay.
Okay, I've got an amended motion. Do I have a second on the amended motion? I got a motion or a second on our amended motion. Any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll. Commissioner McCormick.
Hi.
Commissioner Andrea Adi, Commissioner Faverell.
Hi.
Commissioner Wickern. Commissioner Clontz.
Hi.
Chair vote tie as well. That passes. Thank you. Hey, next item. We're gonna go down to our legislative items. This is item three point one Z T A two zero two three dash zero five, a public hearing to consider an applicant proposed text amendment to section one oh four dash twenty one dash three, manufacturing zone land use table. And this is uh, adding um, data processing centers in, as a permitted use in the M T zone, which is the technology zone. So we might need those.
That's correct.
Director Grover, sorry.
As a legislative item, you'll be forwarding recommendation on to the legislative body, which will be the county commission. You'll need to ha- open and close a public hearing on this item and Mr. Ross is going to be presenting this.
Thank you, sir.
My last name's actually Kobe. I don't, I don't uh, claim to be quite as good as uh, Mr. Ross. We share a same first name, but uh.
I was wondering where that was going, but. Incorrect.
You sit correct. Um. So the, we talked about this in the uh, work session earlier, get the screen to respond. Um, we amended the general plan for this pro- uh, proposed project to uh, include additional area to the north. As you see there, just as a review of this, the general plan does call for in this particular uh, designated area. Uh, business tech and innovation parks. So the proposed use um, clearly fits within that kind of thing, especially where it says low intrusive use on their neighbors. Data centers are typically just either um, warehousing kind of spaces or uh, some employment center and that kind of thing. So it's, it's going to be a very little impact on the adjacent properties. The M and T manufacturing and technology zone itself um, reflects that um, we're looking for, and it says well planned and designed technological and manufacturing parks. So again, the technological uses anticipated. In the zone as was adopted. Just to remind you where this uh, project is and where the um, property in question is, you can see it listed there. And then here's the zoning map as amended. We um, the county commission approved the change to the M and T zone. And so um, what, what ended up happening was that the developer and the owner of the property uh, came in and said, you know, we've got this property and we've got potential people that want to come in. But it's questionable whether or not the zoning use table allows for this kind of use explicitly. Um, you could kind of stretch and say, well, maybe it's allowed or maybe not, but they wanted to make it very clear. And the investors in the property wanted to make it very clear that this was an allowed as of right use. And so that's what's uh, prompted this change. Um, so in consideration, again, compatibility and stability of the development. Uh, with compatibility with the general plan and uh, the timing of this. So all of those seem to be uh, in line there. And then you have model proposed um, language there for a motion in the staff report. So again, as noted in the, in the work session, the pre-meeting, um, that we're changing this from critical infrastructure as was noted. In the um, agenda and was initially requested by the applicant on their application. But we're changing that as staff, we're recommending a change to that to data services rather than critical infrastructure to avoid any confusion with other defined terms, both in state code and otherwise in our land use codes. So data services and then the other uh, uses and ending. Things as, as specified.
This is so we can have Bitcoins out.
That's exactly what it is. You know, that's not, yeah, yes.
It is. Okay. Commissioners, any questions for staff where we open a public hearing on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to open a public hearing on this item.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Got a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, we're now in public hearing. Anybody wish to speak? Pat?
He's got something against Bitcoins.
Pat Burns, fourteen oh seven North Mountain Road. Um. As uh, developer, I just wanted to say this is, I like seeing stuff like this where you've got a perfect use in a perfect location. Amend the master plan. This is a good legislative. I mean, anyway, I just, that's all I want to say is I approve this. I, I don't oppose this at all. But no, I just like to see stuff like this where you're getting a good job come in. I mean, a good business to come in and um, and besides, there was nobody else here to talk, so. Anyway, thanks.
Thanks, Pat. Do you want to speak too? All right. Seeing that, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Got a motion. We got a second.
Second.
Lots of seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Okay, we're now out of public hearing. Commissioners, any discussion on this change? If not, I will entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we approve legislative item three point one Z T A twenty twenty three dash zero five, a public hearing to consider an applicant's proposed text amendment to section one oh four twenty one, three manufacturing zones, land use tables. Providing for the allowance of data services. Colon, data centers, data warehousing, data processing as permitted in the M T manufacturing technology zone. Um, I propose, the proposed ordinance amendment is supported by the general plan and that is my finding.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Lots of seconds. Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Commissioner Clontz. Commissioner Wickern.
Hi.
Commissioner Faverell.
Hi.
Mister Andrea Adi.
Hi.
Commissioner McCormick.
Hi.
Chair vote tie as well. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Hey, told you five forty five, we're gonna make it. I know. Public comments for items not on our agenda. Nah. Just kidding. Any comments? Okay, remarks from planning commissioners? I'll just throw one out there real quick. I, I, I know you made note of it, Director Grover, but if you would talk with commissioners about potentially looking at our ordinance for the um, escrow ordinances and how we finalize those, I think it'd be good to maybe just update it. So. Commissioners, anything else?
I, I'd just like to understand what's there to begin with and then, yeah, and then update it if necessary. Thank you.
I, I had a question about the September. The September meeting or what is it conference?
Utah A P A conference.
Making sure the dates and what affected us and everything.
So Ann will be sending out um, uh, invite to you guys for September twenty eighth and twenty ninth for the Utah A P A conference. It'll be over here at the Echols Conference Center. Um, we're paying your fees, whatever you need um, that way. Um, it does require you to take a little bit of time off work or from your other duties as assigned. Um, so I know that, you know, it's a little bit of a uh, inconvenience, but it is very well worth your time um, to attend um, those events and especially when we have it here in our county. Um, in our, you know, mother city, it's just great to show good representation. So um, I have things adjusted in my budget to make sure that you guys are covered. So um, if you could, and if you can only make one day, that's fine too. So don't feel like, you know, it's, I can't do both. That's fine. We'll sign you up for one day, whether it's a Thursday or a Friday. Um, so yeah. Don't be overwhelmed. And if you can't make it, we totally get it too. So. And that was going to be my comments as well, so.
Perfect. We're gonna make it. Liam, what do you got for us? Okay, if nothing else, we're not gonna have our work session tonight. So um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn. Second.
All right.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thanks. Look, we made it with two minutes to spare.